I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the August 20th Marshalltown Community School District Board Meeting. Welcome to those of you on our audit. And to those of you who will be observing us on delay broadcast. Allow me to introduce the individuals at the table with me. From the right, we have Shawn Harms. He was a former student of mine in the gifted program, so feel very good about that, Shawn Hydman. Ross Harris. On my left, for those who are making great fun of my pop-up, Mike Miller. Ben Fletcher, Janelle Carter. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, and she is the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schutte. He is the Superintendent. And my name is Bea Niblock. And honestly, I'm not on meds. Please read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And stand as you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are. Do you want to start?
Yes. So on the personnel agenda, I highlighted the changes in yellow, but they didn't show up in yellow on here, so I'll just kind of list them. Under the appointments, if you scroll now to numbers nine through 12, those were added since the original consent agenda was posted. And then, under change of contract, number eight and number nine were added since the last posting.
We also had some adjustments under open enrollment. And then, we had just fixed some grammatical errors and such in the superintendent board goals. And then, we had a contract come in today, well, it's actually similar waiver of liability from Alliant Energy relative to the sports complex. Work that's needing to be done to reestablish power and to stay on schedule in order to have that accomplished by the first home football game, varsity football game on August 31st.
Do you want to?
It's a waiver of liability relative to the underground work that they're having to do on our property.
And it involves a cost.
Want to explain that?
Well, the cost of the, yeah, there's a cost to the project, but this is.
Possibility of additional.
The estimate is 3,000 is what they gave us for the estimate.
3,000 for?
The work that they're doing.
Okay, and what's the standard waiver that you said for?
Basically, basically, if, if they were to, on our property, strike something underground that they're not aware of, that results in additional fixing costs, then it would be borne by us.
And an estimate of, would be from $5 to?
I, I do not know, because it would be dependent on whatever it would be that.
So if they would.
Hit a water main?
Yeah.
Or something, yeah.
Or hit an electrical cable, or something of major significance, what kind of cost are we looking at, that we would bear?
Do we want to put this on the regular agenda, so the consent agenda?
I think that we need to probably have further explanation, so. No? No? You don't need further explanation?
Me?
I'm just pulling the board.
No, I think if somebody wants further explanation, I should pull it and do that, yeah.
That's fine.
Sorry, can, I'm on tonight's agenda, just not part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
When is the first football game?
August 31st, home varsity game.
Will pulling that create a problem with that?
Well, are you pulling it?
Not pulling it. Well, no, we're not. We're going to.
It's just not going to be on the consent agenda.
Move it to its own topic instead of the consent agenda.
Absolutely.
We can throw it under its own agenda item, under buildings and grounds.
Yep.
While we're on that, Bea, is now a good time to ask questions about the open enrollment, or?
If you have questions about open enrollment, yeah.
Well, this is where it's still approved agenda.
Yeah, we're still approving, right?
We'll get to that, just real quickly.
I would.
With those, okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? So moved.
Second.
Fletcher Carter, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Potter.
We're honored here to have Mr. Brad Raumiller, Marshalltown High School Social Studies teacher. He was selected for the James Madison Fellowship last year, and is here to report on a four-week summer institute he completed over the summer in Washington DC, so there you go.
Thanks. Yeah, so it was.
Somewhere in that crowd will find you somewhere in that crowd.
You should, yeah, on the second row there, so. This is probably the most public what I did over summer vacation report I've ever made. A big spin you for this. So yes, this summer, I spent four weeks at Georgetown studying the Constitution. Class was the origins of the American Constitution. And so it was four weeks with different representatives of all the different states, all social studies teachers, a few of them are pre-service, but most of them are veterans after some period of time. So it was four weeks out there. Like I said, the course was on the origins of the American Constitution. And so it was housed in Georgetown, so it's in the kind of the Georgetown neighborhood there, and we had all of our classes there. And if you're familiar with the area, it's like, it's called Healy Hall. It's this big Gothic building, kind of classic college-looking building of the 1870s. And so we had most of our classes in there. It looks like Hogwarts is what it looks to. And it was kind of a really amazing experience to have that time. It was very, very academic, highly academic, very rigorous. We spent about three to four hours each day with lecture, discussion sections for about two hours every single day, you know, these pretty sizable papers, lots of reading every night about primary sources, with primary sources of Federalist Papers and everything possibly related to the American Constitution that you can imagine. So really, really rigorous, but besides that, the more exciting part of it is we were able to, it wasn't all toil. We went on lots of field trips and kind of got special lectures. We really kind of were able to see things and be a part of things and hear from people that you probably wouldn't be able to as a tourist, so we're really privileged to be able to. We heard Dr. Gordon Lloyd, the scholar on the Constitutional Convention, Jeffrey Rosen, who would be familiar, he's the editor of The Atlantic. He runs the Constitution Center. He did a speech for us, it was amazing. It's on C-SPAN 3 soon, if you're interested. And Dr. John King, he's a former Secretary of Ed, went to Arlington, Library of Congress, the new African-American museum on the Mall, if you haven't been, it's amazing to go there. Madison's home, Jefferson's home, Washington's home, the Capitol, the White House. And then, what I have here, this is, this is on the steps of Supreme Court, is probably one of the biggest highlights for me, because it's probably my greatest interest area in government, is Supreme Court cases. And so, we're actually able to meet John Roberts. He came out and talked to us, Chief Justice John Roberts, for a period of time answering questions. And being able to listen to him, and it had been just the day that they had released a whole bunch of really important opinions, Gill versus Whitford, the Cherry Mandarin case, and the travel ban case was that day, too. And like, it was just hours after they had released that, and it, you know, it's a real sense of history, and history nerds, you know, it's like, you're in the place, Brown versus Board was, you know, all these major cases, US versus Nixon, and to be there was really pretty amazing. I think the other photo that you have is probably my other highlight, and I'm representing Marshalltown. This was on the Fourth of July, so we had the day off on the Fourth of July, and it was on below the steps of the Lincoln Memorial, and so they, they do the fireworks right there and by the reflecting pool. And, you know, I, earlier in the day, I was able to actually see the Constitution, the Declaration, on the Fourth of July, and so that's kind of an amazing thing, doesn't know what's happened, but, so seeing the fireworks there was, was pretty neat. I mean, huge crowds in DC during the Fourth, I don't know why anyone would want to go there, it's huge, the crowd, but it was a pretty exciting experience. Everybody started chanting USA at the end, and, you know, I don't know, it was a little heartwarming for me. It was divided as we were, people were still chanting USA, and so, you know, maybe there's some hope. So, it was, it was a great experience, learned a lot, I have a lot to bring back from, to the classroom from it, so. So, thank you very much.
Questions from the board?
Sounds great.
Yeah. You going to go back next year?
I have, see, I've started my program now, I'm doing a master's in history in government, and so I've got to spend, I got to spend about three or four weeks over the next couple summers in Ashland, Ohio, exciting Ashland, Ohio. We have to do on-campus studies there, so. I don't know when I'll get back to DC, hopefully soon, but, you know, it's a great experience, you know. Great city for families to travel to, pretty.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's a good one.
Thanks for the representation.
Yeah, sure, yeah, thank you.
For sharing your summer vacations.
And that's what, thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections in the minutes from the last meeting? Any questions about personnel? Looking at the contracts and agreements, we have PLC work, public health, Alice Training, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Special Ed student out. Any questions about open enrollment?
Yeah, I do, um, yeah, I do. I thought there was like a deadline of like March 31st of 2018 to apply for open enrollment starting, you know, this week.
It's March 1st for existing students, as long as they don't qualify under one of the exemptions. The difference here is that most of these have recently moved to the district, they haven't been attending the district, and so when you move, that's an exemption, and you can choose to go to any school.
Okay, so that, these people all fit one of these exemptions?
Yep. Yeah, and kindergarten is different, kindergarten enrollment is September 1st, I think, is the deadline for them, since they, again, haven't been technically in the district. They may have attended a preschool, but preschool isn't part of that process, so kindergarten is the first opportunity that someone could do open enrollment out, and September 1st is their deadline, once you've been in the district, then it's March 1st of each year.
Okay, thanks, that's all I had.
Other questions? Looking at the bills, are there any items of note? Any questions for Paulette? We have a donation from the University of Iowa College of Education to Woodbury Elementary students and families. We have a series of financial reports, and many of them have not been on the board before, so would you walk us through those, please, Paul?
Certainly. So we had a finance committee meeting last week, and we have been discussing, looking at some different monthly reports to present to the board, so this month, you are just going to see a couple of them. As I explained to the committee last week, these are reports that I typically do for myself anyway, so if you like them, you can see them on a monthly basis. If not, or if there's anything else that you guys would rather see that would be more helpful to you, just let me know, and we'll see what we can come up with. But the first, the first attachment there, and the second attachment, those are, this is the report that you are used to seeing, so I just left that out there for this month. Then, the third attachment, the General Fund Budget Authority summary, this isn't a monthly report, but this is something that I just kind of wanted to put in front of you. It kind of helps break down the categorical pots of money that we get as we start looking at our revenue budget. This will tell you how much regular program money we get, all the categoricals, and then at the bottom, it also tells you how that authority is funded. So if you look down towards, under the bottom section, under Foundation Aid, you can see that for this year, 42 million of our spending authority is coming to us through Foundation Aid. We have about 330,000 coming through the commercial and industrial property tax replacement adjustment. And then, property taxes is about 13 million, so we get about 24% of our spending authority through property taxes. And currently, there's also another component that you can use to fund your instructional support levy, which is income surtax, and currently, Marshalltown does not use that at all, so that is zero. So that's just kind of a brief overview of how our revenue is coming in. So then, if we go to the General Fund Revenue Summary, this, in the first report that you guys are used to seeing, it's broken down between local, state, and federal sources. This just breaks it down a little bit more in each of those areas. So the first section is going to be your local sources, which is primarily property taxes, but that also includes our student fees, our tuition that we charge, other students that come into our district. So if you look at the first column, that's going to be our Fiscal 19 budget. So anything in Fiscal 19 that is bold and italicized, those are estimates right now. We don't know exactly what those numbers are going to be, but we're, we're plugging in some numbers to move forward. The second section is our state sources, and that's primarily our state foundation aid, so you can see those first lines there, the state foundation aid, the teacher leadership, teacher salary, we know all those numbers. Those all come through the foundation formula, so we know what those are, and we have those plugged in. So we are estimating that we are going to receive about $40 million from state sources for the current school year. And then the last section is our federal sources. We do not yet know what all of our federal allocations will be for this year. That's going to be primarily our title funding, and then, of course, Medicaid is a big, big federal piece also. So as you can see, under the Fiscal 19 budget, we are estimating that we will bring in about 63.2 million for revenue in Fiscal 19. You will also see the Fiscal 18 actual to budget, Fiscal 17 actual to budget, and Fiscal 16 actual to budget. So you can see there how much of each of those areas we actually collected, what percentage, and how we ended the year then, down at the bottom. Now, for Fiscal 18, we're almost done, we accrue through August 30th, so there still will be a few minor changes, that's why you're still seeing June 30th reports. But 17 and 16 are, are the final numbers, of course. But we're pretty close for, for 18, so. Do you guys have any questions on that report, or is there too much detail, not enough detail?
I like it, it's good. If it's not additional work for you.
No, it's not, because this is something that I have to do for myself anyway.
It might, it might still be helpful to leave the other ones that are a little bit easier to, to walk through quickly, but I don't mind seeing this detail.
Well, we've talked about throughout the year, having Paulette give brief presentations on various segments of the budget, especially when it's timely to do so, and we're talking about it, because some of the things we may only really address once a year, or twice a year, in a formal way, and so I think that will be really helpful for the board as we're working through the year.
And then the final report on there that isn't going to be as meaningful in the first part of the year, but becomes more meaningful as we near the end of the year, you know, in April, we certify a budget, and by law, we are not supposed to exceed that budget without amending it. So this is just a, a report that tracks bifunctional expenditure areas, and according to that, that published budget that we have put forth and approved, so this is one that I watch very closely each month, whether or not you guys would like to also see it and kind of see where we are. As you can see for, this is as of June 30th, we still have a few things that we are accruing, so for instance, on that top line, instruction, right now, we are at 99.99% of that budget. So it is very likely that we will exceed that budget for Fiscal 18 by the time we get done accruing. What that means is that we will have a comment in our audit for Fiscal 18, saying that we have exceeded that budget. But in the other areas, we are, we are good. We did do a budget amendment, if you recall, for the debt service area, because we refinanced that, that issuance, so.
So do we, do we take this down to the monthly level when you're looking ahead, so?
I do do this by month. It's obviously, when you're in the first month of the year, not anywhere close to exceeding your budget. It becomes a lot more meaningful towards the end of the year, but I do do it by month.
So if we're going to exceed instruction at some point in the last 11 months, there's an anomaly.
Yes.
That would have occurred, and you would see that, and would we, we wouldn't talk about it now, we could obviously talk about it.
Right, it would be part of our certified budget process discussions in probably February and March.
Any other questions for Paulette? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Fletcher Carter, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Anything out there?
Nope.
Sure you don't want to talk to us? Moving on to superintendent and board goals, you notice, well, there were some spelling typo kinds of changes made. Other questions, discussion, comments? I have a motion to approve the superintendent and board goals for 2018-19.
So moved.
Harris Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Schutte?
Do we want to address that other item in the?
Let's put it on after what was already on the agenda.
Okay. Do you want to come up and talk about the Franklin roof replacement estimate? Then we had, you know, that waiver of liability with Alliant in the consent agenda, but the board asked for that to be pulled separate, so they could get more information or detail.
The Franklin Elementary Roof, it was a summer project, it was bid out, we sent that out through FEH. We had, we sent it to four different roofing companies. We had one vendor that came back, Central States Roofing, and the total amount was 63,800. We had approved earlier, excuse me, we had approved earlier through our summer projects for $70,000, so this was a pretty good quote. All the other roofing companies were very busy, so we couldn't get any other bids.
And this is the roof that has the flagpole currently on it?
Yes, this is the, the northwest quadrant of roofing on Franklin.
And that was not damaged in the storm?
It was not.
But we did get the permanent roof.
The permanent roof on the north, which was significantly damaged, has been repaired permanently. They came in on Friday, left last night, and it is permanently.
Before it started to rain?
Yes, thank goodness. The only thing that's left on that roof is the exterior coping, which is the aluminum top cap to the roofing.
So what's in front of us here is planned, non-storm-related maintenance, repair, replacement?
Exactly, exactly.
And it's planned to be done, or when are they planning to do the work?
As soon as it's approved, as soon as it's signed off, they will put it in their queue. I'm not exactly sure, but I would, it will be this fall, and this can be done during school, so it's, it's not an issue.
Other questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, what's the cost, do you have a cost associated with the tornado-related damage repair? What would that be?
Initially, we had a bid from a company, and they put us out on their schedule, and the insurance company was not happy with that, so we had a discussion about bringing in another roofer, and that bid went to the insurance company, they approved it, so.
So insurance covered?
Insurance covered, insurance covered the whole thing.
May I have a motion to approve the quote form and contract for the roof replacement of Franklin Elementary as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Carter Fletcher, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Can you read my mind?
Yes.
We would like to know more about the waiver, why costs that could be incurred from here to here, or here to here?
Is everybody very familiar with what we're?
No, let's back up and explain what we're doing.
Okay.
Or why it, and why it needs to be done.
Okay. We, during a relamp visit from a company, we, we had a lot of lights that were out at the complex, and when they came and investigated the lighting, they found that we had lost some power to various portions of the complex, which included the press box, the scoreboard, and some of the light. which included the press box, the scoreboard, and some of the light bank. There are three feed lines from Olive to our transformer, which sits behind the softball bleachers. And a week ago Saturday, we went and checked these lines, and we found that one of the legs was completely dead. One of the feed legs was completely dead.
That was with Alliant, right?
That was with Nickel and Associates and Alliant. Alliant made the determination that they were going to shut down all three lines so that we didn't have any issues, because all of this is underground. So we did the investigation, and it was determined that we needed to replace all three lines. I can't tell you exactly, but I would say early 70s is when these lines were buried. And the potential for all three of these legs to drop off is great, since we had one dropped off. So we need to replace the lines from Olive Street, the power pole on Olive Street, all the way to a transformer that, like I said, sits behind the softball bleachers. 640 feet is the distance from this transformer to the power pole. So we are looking, this affects, obviously, all of the football games. It affects everything at the complex, except for the very west side of the complex, which is fed from a different transformer, which would include the team room and...
Concession.
Concessions. So now we are, the boring company is coming tomorrow, and we're going to put these lines in conduit. We have, the wire is already at Nickel and Associates. And Alliant Energy asks for a waiver of liability. I can't recall, Paulette, you, I don't recall what it's, what the title of this that they're looking for. Because we are after the meter on this pole, they are looking for a waiver that if there is some anomaly that occurs, that they wouldn't be held liable for that. What they will do after the lines are buried, after the lines are terminated on our transformer, they will run it up the power pole and hook it into the power lines and the fuses. So that's what they are asking for.
They're just making the final connection, then?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So we don't know why it happened, and the old lines aren't buried in conduit. So they're just under the ground somewhere.
They are just underground.
And so you just don't know what you're going to hit down there in terms of, like, if you damaged a bleacher, or if you had...
Oh, no, because we are so far to the east, we have, we have a lot of area to work with. And it's all been marked off. It's all been located. The only thing that's out there are our three lines. So we are going to go to the side, do the boring, bury the conduit, pull the three lines. Alliant Energy will do the termination.
Originally, we had a similar waiver with Nickel and Associates, but we were able to successfully get them to...
That would have been the waiver that I would have been concerned about. I mean, Alliant's not, Alliant's not really, what's our liability? Alliant's just making the final connection. Am I missing?
No, Alliant Energy, it is a, this is very, very common when it comes to a utility company. Once they have gone past their meter, once they have gone onto our property and to our responsibility, they just want a waiver of liability, which is, which is very common. And so, like I said, the only thing they're going to do is they're going to tie this into the, to the power, the overhead power with a, with three fuses and disconnects. And they're looking at potentially, I spoke to Amanda today from Alliant Energy, they're looking at potentially a three-person crew, which would be the majority of the day. The total expenditure guesstimate was about $3,000.
So this is mostly because the transformer is on our property?
Exactly.
In, kind of in the stadium complex?
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the master facilities and restoration services agreement and the waiver of liability?
So moved.
Second.
No wonder I couldn't remember.
That was a Heitman, Miller?
Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Moving on to board policies. Dr. Shute?
For the first reading of 204.4 Annual Meeting, no changes since the last meeting. Essentially made adjustment to coincide with changes that we had made in a previous policy.
Are the rest the same?
They're the same in that we have not made any adjustments since... Well, I...
600 and 600.1?
601.1. We did make an adjustment since the last meeting as recommended by Director Heitman.
How about 600? State of the guiding principles?
Same as the last meeting.
Could I have a motion to approve the amendments to 204.4 and 600? Wav the second reading.
600.1 would be the same, too.
I thought you said there were some changes on the one?
No.
You said 601.1, but there isn't?
601.1.
So we're 204.4 and 600?
And 600.1. And 601.2, all have not been adjusted since the last meeting.
So let's restate that to include 601.1 and 601.3. To approve the amendment and waive the second reading.
I think that's still not quite...
I don't think that's quite right.
204.4, 204.4.
Annual meeting.
600, state of the guiding principles. 601.1, nondiscrimination.
Nondiscrimination.
And 601.2, school day.
Okay.
New, new...
New 601.3.
That's where I was confused as well, Paulette, so... It's a new number, 601.2, school day. So the one that's not going to be in this group for approval is the new 601.1 school calendar.
Correct.
Recto?
I think so.
Now. May I have that motion?
So moved. Second.
Fletcher Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're at 601.2, which is the new 601.1 called School Calendar.
Yeah, and as, as stated, we made the adjustment as recommended by Director Heitman to scratch the date, August 23rd, and just put permitted by state law, or less, no sooner than permitted by state law.
So 601.2, the new 601.1 called School Calendar will come back. Alrighty. That was fun. Mine will be equally as fun. 602.1, 602.2, and 602.3 will be deleted. And 602.1 will, there will be a new 602.1, which will combine all three of those policies.
603.1.
Yeah, the new IASB number is 603.1. And I think, are they on board docs? With the corrections in them?
Yes.
Okay. So that will return. But we need to delete 602.1, 602.2, 602.3. Could I have a motion to delete those three policies?
So moved.
Second.
Carter Heitman, Harris? Guessing game tonight, isn't it? You know?
Let's get either way.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Which will now be a new 603.1. Correct?
Yes, that will come back as a first reading.
Right. Then we have a, the 602.5 is now a new policy from IASB, 603.3. And it has a number of changes, a number of changes.
And mainly, we just added, it's a new number for IASB, but not a new policy. So we just simply added in the third paragraph, children from birth through age two, as it relates to the responsibility. We changed the name from 267 to Central Rivers, and then there's just some...
Legal references.
Yeah. So that'll come back.
That will need to come back as well. There was no IASB policy to coincide with 602.6. I would recommend that this policy be marked as reviewed.
That was gonna, I think we were going to delete...
Adult education.
Yeah, and 602.7, safety education.
They're all, they're all crossed out here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because the piece on waiving cost for use of facilities by Iowa Valley would be covered under a Buildings and Grounds policy. And in the new 60... 1, which has all of the elementary, middle school, and senior high curriculum information in it, under elementary, it lists safety education as part of that curriculum. So therefore, 602.7 can be deleted as well. So may I have a motion to delete 602.6 and 602.7?
So moved.
Does that have been... Miller Hernandez? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Okay, back to you.
505.4, testing program is an IASB policy that we do not currently have. And we're recommending that we have that because it's part of our annual notice. Notices that go out, so we really need to have a policy to reflect the notice, annual notice. So that'll come back.
Any questions on that?
And then 804.7 has actually come before you, twice before. This was a policy that a former school nurse, and then Stacy Tool Crawford, who's our lead nurse, crafted to coincide with our implementation, our more formal implementation of AEDs across all the buildings. And we would intend to bring this back again, because there were two minor changes on the second page of the policy that they had recommended, which was eliminating the up to 10% of staff being trained on it. And the drills, they scratched the last part of that bullet point about coordination with local emergency management services.
And the 603.1, basic instruction program is just what we talked about. The elementary, middle school, and high school curriculum.
Correct, being, yeah, encompassed within that policy.
Any questions on any of these policies?
Well then, will all staff be trained on this?
No, there'll be a team of members of the staff that will be trained on it, a safety committee or whatever. Probably three to five people at each site that has one.
And will be trained at Central Office.
Are you volunteering?
No, I'm the one who's going to need it. Okay. Moving on to communications. Mr. Potter, anything you've known?
Yeah, last week, the Teacher Externship Academy was just phenomenal. I've visited several sites and lots of connections made between our teachers and local district commissioners. Phenomenal week, and you both should be praised for all of what you did. And Lisa and a few other people around us helped out as well. But I want to note that.
Looking at reminders, we have the board meetings listed. We also have the meeting dates for the schools presenting. And we're in the midst of finalizing that information that each school will present, giving them a format to use. And Lisa will be heading that up to make sure that we get the right information at the right time.
Just in a nutshell, we spoke, we met and talked last week about it again. And so our intention will be in the spring to have a couple special work sessions that will be primarily the building sharing out their data, similar to what, well, from their attendance center plans and/or similar to what we report out district-wide on C I A C. So those will be full data meetings with probably rotating presentations, kind of a roundtable type thing, in some way, shape, or form. And that's what we talked about at the goal-setting meeting. And then we're surveying them on special interest topics that they would present 10 minutes or less at each board meeting, doing our best to ensure it stays within the time constraints, as well as keep it limited to the number of people that are involved in the presentation, primarily the principal, instructional coach, possibly one other staff member and/or, you know, if they are integrating students into the presentation, keeping it one or two for that. So it'll be a different format. And in addition to that, I'm encouraging all of our departments to also share relevant data to their arenas through many presentations, such as, similar to what, you know, Paulette did today during the consent agenda.
Thank you. That's exactly what we asked. We appreciate it.
Janelle has policies for the next time. We've had a finance committee question?
Question. Student participation on the board, when will that start?
The next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
It'd be September.
We'll all be meeting with them next week over the high school. There are three. And they'll sit with Lisa in the front row. Andrew will be with Josh in the back row. I've talked to Chuck, who had already been told this, Lynn, and Rex about, you know, not being required to be here, but being here on call if they've got something that's being presented before the board or being addressed before the board.
Thank you.
Yep. Chuck did have tonight off, but I was able to quickly get him here.
Yeah, it's amazing, technology can get that information out in a hurry, can't it?
We need you.
Finance committee met. Sean or Janelle, if you have anything to share with us at this point?
I can quick go through our agenda. We talked about, we're working on the payroll person replacement. We talked a little bit about policies relating to finance and some things that we're going to be looking into, or Aaron and Paulette will probably be looking into a little bit more. We talked about, a lot about the, a little bit about the, what you saw on the agenda today. And I was actually going to have Paulette talk about that at this point, but that's pretty much been explained already. And then we talked about, the next big thing coming up is the instructional support lobby, so we talked about that a little bit. That's it.
Anything to add, Sean?
No, good meeting.
Oh, and we'll be probably meeting monthly, I think. But we did not set a date for the next meeting.
We did set a date for the next meeting.
Did we?
September 25th?
Totally did.
Okay, that's probably on my calendar.
Were we not supposed to tell it now?
It is, you accepted.
That's okay.
Did you do that after she left the meeting?
It's been a crazy month.
You see the board member representatives chart on the screen. And please start thinking about what you would like to participate in. If you'd like to stay where you are, if you'd like to do something different. And I'll ask you for those after the next meeting, so that we can have that list prepared by October 1st, as we've done in the past. What have we done tonight to improve education for the students in our district?
Pretty light agenda.
Yeah, it's a pretty light agenda.
But we improved goals, and I think the good goals, and I think we're continuing to improve on how we're setting goals. And if not, you know, I think a big part of it is the conversation that goes around those goals, so, yeah.
I attended part of the externship this week, and it was really good. I think they really focused on the career and college-ready aspect, which basically what the externship was. So I think that was a really great thing. There were about 50 teachers there, I believe, so.
Did we survey the staff when they were done, to see what they thought about it?
Every day, they do a unique survey every fourteen days.
Okay. Pardon me?
I don't know what the results are.
Was that in addition to reflection, or that was a reflection?
They were allowed to do it.
Anecdotally, it was really positive. I talked to them, I was able to go out three of the four days to at least a portion of it, and heard nothing but extremely positive things.
It would be interesting if we had one or more of the teachers show how they have included that information into their plan for what's happening in curriculum, as long as that was the purpose, was to inform them so that they could include those things in their classrooms, go right along with all of the curriculum things that we've been talking about.
Yeah, we could have Dee try to maybe capture a teacher from each level, or share a little bit about that.
My quote tonight comes from Sun Tzu. And I didn't particularly know him very well. He was an ancient Chinese philosopher, and he lived in the early 500 B.C. So not my timeframe. But it's interesting that his quote matches exactly what's happening in Marshalltown today. He said, "In the midst of chaos, there is always opportunity." Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Miller and?
Carter.
Carter.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are adjourned.